Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a Joint Protections of Persons and Properties Subcommittee. Slash Town Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, six P M. In the Veterans Meeting Room. Uh, Agenda Item Number Two, Roll Call. Councillor Shanyer?
Here.
Councillor Provost?
Present.
Councillor Ortiz, present, to quorum. Agenda Item Number Three, Review slash Discuss Acceptance of a Donation of ten thousand.
Excuse me?
From the Southbridge Business Partnership.
Uh, Manager, did you turn the camera?
Yeah, it's already recording.
Sorry, uh, I'll double check when I thought you said he was recording. He did say it. He was recording everything you were saying.
I don't care. I'm not gonna be great.
It's recording? So Agenda Item Number Three, Review and Discuss Acceptance of a Donation of ten thousand from the Southbridge Business Partnership. S P P. And allow the Chief of Police to use it at their discretion. Entertain a motion to recommend that Town Council vote to accept the donation.
Uh, one second.
Town Manager?
Oh, I'm defer to Chief of.
Chief?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chair. This donation is working in partnership to do some, uh, anti-crime measures in the community. With the business partnership, I'm waiting on one other business to match that donation, and we're going to move forward with a couple of camera systems and things like that in the downtown core area. That's coming, to be announced. But that's a part of that money, that's all that money's intended for. We're just waiting on one more donation. Before any of that goes live, I will speak with the council and brief them on what exactly we're doing, because it's gonna be a good thing for the community.
Okay. Any questions?
Would it be wise that we go in the executive session during that, but deal with the security of the main street, or? No, it'd be good for the public to know what we're doing. Okay, thank you.
Any questions out there? None? All in favor? Classes. Agenda Item Number Four, Review slash Discuss Acceptance of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State nine-one-one Department Grant in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars for the reimbursement of funds under the State nine-one-one Department F Y two thousand twenty-six Support and Incentive Grant, and allow the Town Manager to sign all related documents and contracts. Entertain a motion to recommend that Town Council vote to accept this sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars grant.
So?
Second.
So, thank you. It's Chairman. Through you, the next three grants are annual grants that we submit for and get, uh, received from the State nine-one-one. Has nothing to do with the last item on this agenda.
Okay.
These are grants that we get every year that the chief puts in, that they have to document, train in, they have to document, uh, for the medical dispatch and alike. Um, I'll defer to the chief for all further explanation, but this is just recurrent. We have to just vote to accept.
Okay. Chief?
Uh, through you again, Mr. Chair. These grants we've gotten since two thousand and nine, Lieutenant Salisbury, all three of them. Now Lieutenant Salisbury handles them, we apply for them. The State, um, nine-one-one Department has the funds and enormous amount of funds in place to make this training possible. And the last year was about the same amount. This goes basically to staff dispatches. To add another position, like if we have nine dispatches, we try to fund one of their salaries using some of this as support incentive money. And again, we've been doing it every year since oh nine. It's a great program.
Any questions? None, all in favor? Classes. Agenda Item Number Five, Review and Discuss Acceptance of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State nine-one-one Department Grant in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and three cents for the reimbursement of funds under the State nine-one-one Department F Y two thousand twenty-six Emergency Medical Dispatch Grant, and allow the Town Manager to send all related documents and contracts. Entertain a motion to recommend that Town Council vote to accept this.
So?
Seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and three cents grant.
So?
Second.
Through you, Mr. Chair, this grant is to offset some of the costs of the quality assurance per the nine-one-one regulations that went into effect in two thousand and eight, which you will hear a lot about tonight. Um, every community has to do this to make sure that they answer nine-one-one calls properly. This helps offset some of those costs. And again, we've gotten this every year for many years.
Any questions? None, all in favor? Agenda Item Number Six, Review and Discuss the Commonwealth of Massachusetts State nine-one-one Department Grant in the amount of twenty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars, fifty-two cents for the reimbursement of funds under the State nine-one-one Department F Y two thousand twenty-six Training Grant, and allow the Town Manager to sign all related documents and contracts. Entertain a motion to recommend that Council vote to accept this twenty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-two cents grant.
So?
Second.
Chief?
Through you, Mr. Chair, the training grant. Every year we have to conduct a certain amount of hours of training, sixteen hours. Well, every dispatcher has to do for, it's called in-service training. And this helps offset the cost to send them to that training that is mandated though. And again, every year we get this for several years.
Any questions? None, all in favor? Agenda Item Number Seven, Review and Discuss the Regionalized the Town of Southbridge Dispatch Operations, and entertain a motion to recommend that Town Council vote to support joining the Central Massachusetts Regional Emergency Communication Center, C M R E C C. Town Manager?
Yeah, a motion for discussion, please.
A motion?
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, first off, I just wanna just stop by stating, uh, I appreciate, you know, coming back down here to PPP for further discussion. The intent all along was to have discussion about this. Uh, originally it was gonna be a full presentation to the entire council, because obviously not all town councils can come show, show to meetings due to variety of schedules, so, uh, the goal was to have a full council briefing and presentation in public. Um, and then if any motion was to refer back for further discussion, that has happened in the past with a number of items throughout the years. Um, so, uh, but coming down here, uh, I, we appreciate the opportunity to, uh, bring this forward and, and discuss, um, this proposal. So I just wanna, uh, as a matter of, of, of history, because I do appreciate all the town councils that have reached out to, uh, myself and the chiefs. Um, as I stated at the last Town Council meeting, when I passed out the binders, the intent was for us to provide as much information and have a good dialogue, because these decisions are important decisions for our community and the town. Um, appreciated the conversation that I had with Vice Chairman Montague today. It was a quite lengthy conversation and, you know, just to clarify, I did some research on some of the things that were discussed this morning relative to dispatch. I just wanna back up, um, as to a little bit going back in time and how we got to this point. On or about April fifth of two thousand seventeen, a feasibility study was conducted by the Town of Southbridge uh, for the development of a regional E-nine-one Communication Services for Chalton, Oxford, Southbridge, Spencer, and Sturbridge. I do have that study. If anybody wishes to have a copy of that study, I'd be more than happy to share it, as long, as well as the PowerPoint that went with that presentation. At the time, the recommendation to the towns, all towns, was to create a district, which was gonna be called the, uh, Central Regional Emergency Communications Center. There was a draft operating budget that was created. There was discussion about the new systems. The recommendation that this rec was gonna be located at a neutral site. Much discussion was held by many parties as to maintaining dispatches that we currently had, how the staffing models would go. At that time, Southbridge had an estimated of thirty point three-seven percent of all calls within that set of those towns, with approximately twenty-five point nine-eight percent of the population. In May of two thousand seventeen, PPP Subcommittee held many discussions relative to the options. The options that were presented at that time were to enter into the Central Regional Emergency Communication Center, have a combined fire police within the Town of Southbridge, or the final option was add in four civilian dispatches to police and fire. So it was maintain, add more, or do a combined fire police within the Town of Southbridge. On July twenty-fourth of two thousand seventeen, the Town Council voted to support further research into the establishment of the central dispatch within the Town of Southbridge, with a final plan to be ratified by the Town Council. At that time, the Town Council voted eight to one to support that. On March thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, the PPP Subcommittee discussed many of the costs of combining the Police Department and Fire Department Dispatch Services. There was further discussion, and was gonna be brought back for additional discussion. In April of that same year, they had further discussion on the budget, adding dispatches to the budget. And then a motion was made to put forth in the F Y two thousand nineteen budget process, a combined fire police dispatch was starting off with the addition of two dispatches. During the course of that, in approximately October of two thousand eighteen, I remember this because I had, then became a Town Councilor, the question back in May was whether Ryan Fatman and Representative Durant had secured a hundred thousand dollars worth of funding to expand the current police dispatch, to incorporate additional dispatches. And then, once that was finalized, to bring over and cut over for the nine-one-one for the fire dispatch as well. The intent during that whole period was to combine dispatches. Which that did ultimately take place, and I don't remember the ribbon cutting date of the final dispatch.
Twenty-twenty.
Twenty-twenty. So that goes to the twenty-twenty, but this was all you've asked about the documentation, so that is the documentation that I did for you today for the questions that you've had. So for approximately the last four, uh, five years, we've been operating under the police-fire dispatch. In February of two thousand twenty-four, a group of the same towns decided again, because of the availability of funds for a regional dispatch center, and the issues that all these towns, including ourselves, had relative to staffing our dispatch centers, the increasing cost of technology, and managing these systems within a police, uh, setting, or an individual department setting, or a town center, to again look at a combined, uh, dispatch, the possibility of a combined dispatch center. At the time, it was Spencer, Sturbridge, Charlton, and Southbridge that decided to go through with that initial review. Town Council, uh, voted to, uh, allow us to move forward with that feasibility study, and during the process, Auburn joined, because there, everybody was experiencing the same issues. On or about May of this year, the study was completed. And part of our, I know councils are concerned about the, the information going through. During the whole course of this, we've had many conversations with different district models, district centers. How best to go through Southbridge? Was it do, do the four or five towns establish their own district? And a district would be simply not hosted by a community, because no department wanted to host a dispatch center anymore. It's costly. It takes our manpower. No town wants to take that under, so establish a district of those towns that would, and the chief's, and member of the state, uh, Peter, I forgot your last name, Peter, but, uh, Peter, uh, consultant, uh, well, works for nine-one-one, has been valuable in all the information, and will gladly share all the information. We looked at, uh, a number of centers. Webster-Dubley, which has the two-town dispatch, but they're hosted by the Webster Police Department. We went to Wachusett Regional Communication Center, at the time was being hosted by Holden. Uh, they were moving to a district bond, I don't know if they have yet, but, uh, they were thinking about it. Uh, we listened and had a presentation by Westcom, which was in west, Western Mass, which was Chickopee, West Springfield, Ware, and Hudson, um, about the abilities to join an existing rec. But the study itself was, do we do this as four towns alone, or five towns alone, and establish a brand-new rec center? But these, these other individuals, we did our due diligence to go forward and see if they, uh, what it was all about. How could this best support the towns, support our communities, support our residents, support our fire police officers, their E S, continue to provide a, a good, strong product? The reason is that it came up kind of fast was the Rutland Dispatch Center, which was a hosting bond at the time, decided to become a district. Am I correct on all this? Okay. Which is called the Central Mass Regional Emergency Communication Center. They formed a district, and as part of that, had a mission to expand and take on additional communities, and reached out and provided us an interest, interested community packet. So all along, we were looking at this, saying, are we interested in it? How are we gonna go? The town that we were involved in the study took that and went pretty quickly in their adoption of going through that district. So, as of today, we are the last town of the original four towns, and then Auburn. Out of those five towns of the study, four have said they're going with, uh, the Central Mass Regional Emergency Security Center. So this was an opportunity for us to either say, what do we do and bring it to the Town Council? Do we continue to struggle in our mission to get dispatchers? Find quality dispatches? The increase in volume that we have with dispatch, with our call volumes, and the numbers are there. If you look at the numbers from this packet compared, at two thousand seventeen compared to today, the tremendous growth in the number of just nine-one-one calls, the staffing that we have, it was an opportunity for us to present this to the Town Council, present to the town, and say, tell us what, uh, we know what our recommendation is, but what is the Town Council? Where do we wanna go as a town, as a community? As part of that study, they were looking for different locations within municipalities, because this was hosted by the Town of Rutland in the Rutland Police Department. That is moving out, which is a big ask for the Town of Rutland, right? They, they, they're in the same boat, right? We had this within our police department, now we're taking this dispatch, taking it completely out of the town. We offered a couple of locations in the Town of Southbridge to have considered for dispatch locations. Um, other communities reached out, any locations that you might have. This piece of property located in Auburn became available. It is a magnificent, magnificent site if anyone is to go, and we offered that out to councils, that's why kinda said, hey, look, here's the manual research, we're offering opportunities. That location is incredible, to say the least. I think out of the whole state is probably the best site, it was already available to be transitioned into a, a, a regional dispatch center. As part of that now, the towns of Auburn, I don't know, Town of Oxford, I believe, and now the Town of
Sutton.
Sutton, um, have now also decided to join this regional dispatch center. So, tonight, we're here tonight with a member of the state, our presentation. We're asking that you consider it. If you need more information, we gladly search out any information that you have. Do our due diligence, because it is an important conversation to have. It's an important dialogue, and we wanna make the best decision that we have. So this has been a long-going, number of years progression. Back in two thousand and seventeen, when this came before the Town Council, there were similar concerns that we have today. There were concerns about whether you go back or forth, go forward. Part of the conversations, and I have the minutes, I'll gladly share it with any of the councils, I did this research this afternoon, I'll forward whatever the minutes are to those meetings, was a stepping stone from going where we were to a local to continue, uh, looking for the region. So I'll now defer to the chiefs for their presentation, and gladly answer any questions tonight. I just, we wanna have a great dialogue on this, and make sure that we make, uh, a decision that's best for the town. Thank you.
Chief?
So through you, Mr. Chair, I, I was gonna get into the history, but thank you, Mr. Manager, for doing that. You eliminated about five minutes of, uh, my speech, so. So I just wanna be, be clear and transparent, since I've been the chief, I mean, everybody in the room that knows me, you know I have open conversations with every single Town Councilor, especially leading up to this meeting. I appreciate the opportunity to come here and speak publicly about it, and explain why I think this decision's critical for the town in the future. Uh, I will start by saying this recommendation that we're here for tonight, it's in no way a reflection of any of the people that currently work for us in the civilian world. Um, this is actually because of them, because of their hard work and their commitment. I believe that they and our residents, they deserve more than what we currently offer them, more than what our resources can provide them due to the financial, the, uh, financial situation of the town. Um, I'll skip the historical process, so our current challenges now that we have, you know, let's be honest, we're all in the same room, we're all adults, right? Uh, we cannot compete, we absolutely cannot compete with any state-funded regional dispatch setup, and I will get into that. Um, we are turnover. We've had eleven full-time dispatches and numerous part-time dispatches. And Lieutenant Salisbury, who was in charge of our dispatches, can attest to all this, please start me, correct me if I'm wrong. Um, in the last five years, we've lost eleven people. Only one original dispatcher, original remains with us. Uh, we just had a dispatcher leave to go and be a police officer, so we now have to cover that with overtime shifts, because no one wants to come and work here. Is it gonna get any easier when we have the largest SEMrec, is what I would call it, in the state, two towns away from us, that's paying five to ten dollars an hour, that's offering eighty, twenty healthcare, a better pension, better opportunity for advancement? We will not be able to touch them. It's gonna be the gold standard, working conditions. As a matter of fact, let me go, let me rewind that a little bit. We had a dispatcher, one of our best dispatches, she was going to another community, right next door, we shall remain nameless. Um, and I brought her upstairs and I said, hey, what are you leaving for? I thought you liked it there. I love it here, chief. I don't even wanna leave. If we match what you're making, what they're gonna pay you, will you stay? Absolutely. What are they making? What are you, what are you making? She tells me her rate, I look at the rates, she literally, year one, step one, makes more than max dispatcher in Southbridge after five years of service. So walking in the door, we didn't even have a rate on the books in Southbridge to compete with the neighboring community. And SEMrec's gotta be five dollars on top of that more an hour. So I don't know how the hell we're gonna recruit anybody. We could be the big, the biggest, shiniest facility in the world in Southbridge, but we, we're not gonna be able to touch this. The working conditions, our dispatches right now, we have two people on the desk, they handle police, fire, prisoner checks, walk-ins, records request, community room, so many things that our dispatches do, I could go on and on and on. They go to the comm center next door, they literally do nothing, nothing like that, no walk-in traffic, the doors are locked down. It's a secure facility, they do nothing but answer phones and dispatch on the radio. So even if we created our own elite comm center, which I've heard a lot of people tell me they wanna do, we can't compete with a state, state-backed operation. I can't say that enough. It's unlimited resources. The manager alluded to it, we offered three locations in our community, um, to nine-one-one. A lot of the other communities all, also offered their sites, because we all wanted it in our community. I'm a salvage-first guy, I would have loved to have had that here. But this Auburn building, this commercial building fell out of like the sky out of nowhere, and it's an absolute perfect location that we cannot touch. Um, so again, over the last year or so, we worked with Chalston, Sturbridge, Auburn. Uh, this was approved by the council to do that. We did the study, um, everybody's joining this, there's no questions, there's no fighting, they've already all supported it. It's going to Albert Street in Auburn. The operational benefits, like I said, currently two dispatches, manning business lines, nine-one-one lines, foot traffic, prisoners, which is our biggest liability, two people working, to ten working every shift. And on that shift, you're gonna have four people dedicated to nine-one-one, three to police, three to fire, you will have a boss on every shift. You're gonna have a director, a deputy director, a shift supervisor, a training coordinator, quality assurance personnel, and dedicated I T and radio technicians. We will never, ever be able to get any of that without spending millions of dollars. There's gonna be a proper workload distribution, there's gonna be improved response times, increased safety for, for police, fire, and our residents. Better morale and retention, overall better work environment that we will not be able to touch. No single municipality, this is not Southbridge, unique to Southbridge anyway, we can't recruit, um, including us, we can't afford it. We can't afford to build what they're building in Auburn. And the, the competition right now is like, it's like a blood sport, right? Uh, with Auburn, and Charlton, and us, and Webster, we're all fighting over the same pool of candidates. So I don't know how that is going to get better, when all those towns have decided to merge and take the best dispatches available and put them in a rec. The important part, one of the most important parts, I know at least for elected officials, our current communication budget, with salaries, overtime, sick leave for two thousand twenty-four, um, what we pay into the pension, is what I got through H R, what we pay healthcare, everything is eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, two, eight hundred and twenty-three, two hundred dollars and seventy-four cents. Our estimated assessment is gonna be three hundred and ninety grand. So the projected annual savings is four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, two hundred and fifteen, four thirty-two, two fifteen, ninety-one cents. So over five years, if you look at the five-year periods, I'm gonna get into that in a second, the town, we could get a net savings of about three million bucks over five years to go to a regional comm center and provide a state-of-the-art, uh, facility for our people to work in. All these funds could be reinvested in the police and fire, I, I'll get into what I plan on doing with our side anyway. But what's important is the first three years, this is up and running, if you didn't look at those books. Twenty twenty-seven through twenty thirty, zero cost for the community, zero. Twenty thirty-one, fifty percent cost, twenty thirty-two, seventy-five percent. We don't have to pay that three hundred and ninety thousand dollar assessment till twenty thirty-three. That's when our bill would be due. The local presence, this is important to me. It's always gonna remain. Our P D will never, ever go dark, ever. It will not be allowed while I'm here. I know the leadership team here, coming up through the ranks, feels the same. Um, we will always have a local person hired by this council, police officer, in that, in the, it won't be a comm center, in dispatch, um, answering the phone, answering the business line. When a local person calls five four two zero, it will have that local flavor to it. It'll be someone that you know answered the phone, someone that was hired by us, someone that was perhaps born and raised there. Our dispatches right now, saying, well, back to them, none of them are born and raised there. All the nine women that we have working for us right now, they're all born and raised somewhere else. So it's not like, we're, we're actually gaining a little bit of local flavor if we have police officers going back to an in-house officer. Um, that local presence is huge. Any non-emergency need, any business line, any walk-in, will be local. The only thing that will be changing is, I don't know, the twenty million dollars or some radio infrastructure that will be paid for by the state, um, and a nine-one-one line, that's it. That's all that's gonna be changed. Most people in the community won't even know that, it won't even know that we switched to a regional concept. It's gonna be the same level of service locally, and a better level of service at the nine-one-one stage. Massachusetts says sorry to regional centers, I know how the state is, we are trending towards, and I'm not speaking bad about nine-one-one, you know, throw the arrow at me. Um, Florida, Texas, California, they're all regional, they all have several comm centers for huge states. We've got like four thousand of them, it makes no sense. Mass is trending towards that. They wanna get us all into one comm center, it's easier for them to operate and maintain. Um, I don't wanna be the town that says no, I think we're going to be, but I don't wanna be, we'll be the only community that says no, um, unless we table it and discuss it, or whatever this council decides to do. But we're gonna delay or reject an opportunity, and we could get left behind, because sooner or later, and I, I know it, just like a body camera, sooner or later, they're gonna, we're gonna be told, hey, you guys are losing all your money unless you're regionalized. And then they're gonna like pigeonhole us and stick us somewhere that we might not be happy with, and we're not gonna have any opportunity to have any say at all. So, cost savings. It's not all about money savings, it's really not. It could be a wash, it's certainly not gonna cost more. But by the time we staff the police department with internal officers, it could be a net zero gain. But, you get an improved service delivery, you ensure the safety of our residents and our responders, and you're supporting our dispatches and giving them the resources that they need. Oh, I'm, on this, I've served this town for thirty years, born here, lived here, educated here, my mother lives here, my father lives here. My father needed an ambulance a couple of weeks ago, good job, by the way, I hate giving the, uh, time and credit, but. Um, so I get it, I get the concerns about a nine-one-one person answering the phone somewhere else. I respect the politics, I respect the process, but I also understand the public safety requirements, and this just seems like we have a familiar face inside, probably more familiar than we have right now, if we transition to this approach. It would be a veteran operation. I was asked by a counselor, um, if this is such a big deal, and if things are so bad right now, why did it take this long? Why are we just bringing this to your attention now? It's not that it's that bad, but what I would say is we have an opportunity to make improvements. Um, I ask for more money every year from the, uh, Town Manager and whoever has been over the last ten years for dispatch, because we need more resources, we need more people, e- even though we're having an incredibly difficult time recruiting. Um, but it's always denied, because we don't have the money. So I don't see how it's gonna get any better. We all want salvage first, I want salvage first. You have people that are sitting in this room right now, that are police officers that work with us, we were all born here, we were all raised here, our families all still live here. I only moved twenty years ago because of the school system, and I'm being honest with you. I was getting ready to have kids, I didn't want them in the district for various reasons, and, uh, but that was my prerogative to move and ne- live next door to my sister in a neighboring community. But my family, aunts, uncles, parents still live here, so they would all benefit from this, so it's personal to me. It really is. So, thank you for your consideration, and I know Peter's here to talk, but I'll, I'll defer anything else to the fire chief.
So obviously, there's been a lot of questions. Thank you, everybody, for coming in, thank you, Mr. Chairman, in regards to this. A- as a lot of the questions have come around today and over the last week or so, I think, I think the police chief and I have pretty much a lot of the answers, and hopefully we've answered some of your questions. Tonight, I want you to bring those questions to us, and like the chief says, if we have to defer this and move it on to another meeting, uh, or another meeting after that, we're, I'm okay with it. I think it's good, let's air everything out. Um, some of the councils have said to me that, uh, they didn't get enough time to review the information, and having this conversation tonight is, is is the way that we need to have this happen. Um, I support everything the chief says, this is, this is really the way that we're moving towards the future. I don't wanna take, uh, Mr. Kinnis's, uh, information, but I think those, those first couple of items that you saw on tonight's agenda, those will potentially be gone if we stay as a sole source. those will potentially be gone if we stay as a sole source dispatch center. Those, those, those monies may not be available. Again, I'll let him answer that. But I, like the chief said, we are trending, the state is trending to scale down all of the PSAPs that are currently in the state to move them into a couple larger centers, and I believe that this is the right approach. And again, I, I, I think this is the best for the firefighters. It's best for the police. I really think it's the best for the dispatchers because it's gonna give them a better opportunity to advance. Mental health is huge with me. These people will be able to be pulled off the radio, given their time and doing it. Their, this system is gonna be set up for those advantages, advantages for those employees, our employees. Our, our, our dispatchers have decided to go in that direction if we go down that road today. But again, I'm open. This is a hundred percent all on board. The chief, the chief and I sat, what, yesterday and reviewed this together. It's all the points that, that I continue to agree on. We can talk about, a little bit about the radio infrastructure and the councils and things like that because some people have questions on that, and, and we can give you the answers and hopefully we can go from that.
I apologize. I'm not gonna hijack the media, I promise, but through you, Mr. Chair. I, I left out the part that Southbridge, right now, in the way it's designed, if you look at that map, I just did a little blue marks because it's kinda tough to differentiate between them, but that's who the comm center will be servicing. Southbridge by far is gonna get the most bang out of this dispatch center. If you're a smaller town, and I'm certainly not being disrespectful, but you have less call volume, less issues, you're not gonna get the type of service that like, our community is gonna demand a certain level of service, and you will absolutely get the most out of this comm center. It makes the most sense for us because we're gonna benefit the most, because we're the biggest fish in that pond right now. I don't see a bigger, Worcester's already with Lester in a comm center, so they're not gonna wanna join, but no one else in that area can touch us as far as call volume and what we do every single day in this community and the police and the fire side of the house. So we stand to gain a tremendous amount of, you just better increase service professionalism, speed. The call volume just benefits us, and it's only going up in the community. We all know that. So I just wanted to get that out there. We're the biggest. If we pull out, that kinda tweaks a lot of those assessment fees for other communities. And right now, we're in a good place, and if other people join, that cost for our annual assessment, it's cost sharing. It's only gonna go down. But we're still gonna be the busiest community. We're still gonna benefit the most. So I will answer whatever you need to answer, or I'll stay here as long as you want.
Just, I just, thank you. I just wanna add it to that point. I think one of the councils I spoke with over the last day or so is that in regards to Southbridge, and I know we have our own thing. We have our drug problem. We have crime. We have all these things. We are a little bit different than those other communities in there. If, when the center, if we do go to the center, if, if Southbridge is having those issues and more and more call volume and they need to move things around in that center, there is room for expansion to move Southbridge to another room. All the calls will still come in from Southbridge and go to the dispatch center, but they, they may give us four more fire dispatches and four more police offices. This, this product that, that we're proposing is, is, is room for growth, room for growth for Southbridge, room for growth for these other towns. And I, again, that's, that's where we're going from there. So thank you.
Just one point before we get into questions. I'm good, like the chief said, like, if there are questions, let's make sure that we have another meeting and I just throw up a recommendation to go up to council. The town of Sturbridge, I think it took them three meetings before they finally adopted it because the selectmen had questions and said, and that's the point of having a council presentation type of form of government, right? It's not always vote all the time, right, away. It's okay to have additional meetings, and like I said, Sturbridge went back and forth. I think Charlie called me. Charlie Blanchard called me right before his wife passed away because he was sort of asking questions about certain things that he saw on the agreement. What did we think about it? So it's great to have questions. Let's not rush and, you know, just make a, a recommendation that, that might fail without having, uh, due diligence and additional conversations. So I think it's important to have that. If there are questions that linger, let's have those questions. Let's get the research, and come back to you. Thank you.
I guess I'll ask a question first. Do we know how much it would cost if we kept the dispatcher in town?
So currently, we're at nine hundred thousand. That doesn't include radio infrastructure. That was simply just operating costs. We certainly could break it down a little bit more as to additional cost, but that was just personnel alone. If we get into radio infrastructure, upgrades to radio infrastructure and all that, that we would have to do, we could, we could try to get some additional dollars for the council. And that, I know Council Montigny had brought up of, of, you know, maybe we should have had that as part of the presentation, and I appreciate that question. And that is a good question, and we can certainly look at it. The, the purpose of the feasibility study was to present information and say the direction our recommendation would be, but if there's further information, we'll probably go forward. George?
Well, I got this this week. What I looked for was a pros and cons of going into the regionalized dispatch, and I didn't find the pros and cons in this article here. I found just pros, pretty much. And so I took the time and did the research and indulge me with what, what I kinda have and what I came up with. How the pros of consolidation is to improve efficiency and coordination. Regional PSAPs streamline operations by centralizing emergency call-taking and dispatching. This reduces call transfer, minimizes response time, ensures a more coordinated response during large-scale incidents. Cost savings. By sharing resources across multiple jurisdictions, agencies can reduce operational costs associated with staffing, equipment, maintenance, facility maintenance. Regional centers are also allowed for bulk purchasing of technology, leading to lower, lower overall expense. Enhanced technology redundancy. Consolidation enables agencies to invest in state-of-the-art communication technology, including next-gen nine one one systems, advanced mapping, real-time data sharing. Additionally, regional PSAPs often have better backup systems and redundancies and measures in place, ensuring continuing of operations during disasters. Standardized trading and protocols. Regionalization promotes consistencies in training, policies, and procedures across the agencies. This enhances interoperability, ensures all emergency responders follow the same protocols, improving overall emergency response. Increase staffing flexibility. Smaller nine one one centers often struggle with staffing shortages, high turnover rates. Regional PSAPs provide a larger talent pool, allowing for more flexible scheduling, better workload distribution among call-takers and dispatchers. The cons of consolidation, and this is where I got pretty much went from supporting it fully to stay on the fence kinda thing. Loss of local knowledge. Dispatches in smaller local nine one one centers often have intimate knowledge of their communities, including landmarks, unique addressing systems, local response dynamics. Consolidation may lead to a loss of this familiarity, potentially affecting response efficiency. Initial cost. Although consolidation offer long-term cost-saving, the initial investment in interfracture, technology, and training can be substantial. This transition process may also face resistance from personnel stakeholders accustomed to existing systems, even though I understand that the E-nine one one provides funding. Potential decrease in service and quality. Larger regional PSAPs may struggle with call volume surges, leading to longer waiting time or difficulties maintaining a personalized level of service. Without careful management, consolidation could lead to a perception of decreased service quality. Governance and control issues. Managing a regional PSAP requires careful coordination between multiple jurisdictions, each with their own leadership, funding structures, and operation priorities. Disagreements over governance, funding, and decision-making authorities can complicate the consolidation process. Again, benefits for regionalized dispatch centers. Enhanced efficiency coordination, cost efficiency, advanced technology integration, scalability during major incidents, inter-agency collaboration. Challenges and risk. Single point of failure. If the regional center is subject to a cyber attack, equipment malfunction, or natural disaster, multiple jurisdictions could experience a loss of emergency service unless robust contingency systems are in place. Culture and operational disparities. Agencies frequently possess distinct procedures and community expectations. Emergency needs can engender friction unless differences are recognized and respected. Call volume overload. During large-scale emergencies, regional centers may become endonated, leading to delay and diminished effectiveness. Loss of local autonomy. Smaller communities may feel annihilated, annihilated from decision-making process or fears that their unique needs will be disregarded with a regional, uh, response. Bottom line, regional dispatch centers can represent a significant enhancement to emergency response systems when meticulously designed. The success of such initiatives hinge on robust stakeholders engagement, redundancy planning, and cultural sensitivity. They are not universal remedies. However, when executed with precision, they can save lives and reduce costs. The interesting thing that I watched, I read about was an article called America's Nine One One Workforce Is In Crisis Results Of A Nationwide Nine One One Staffing Survey? And I believe this was done by the National Association of Dispatches, or.
Self-communicators.
Communicator. So, when I saw the pros and cons about this, I, I'm concerned because in my own town, in our own town that we're all part of, I, I don't wanna see the police department go dark, and you respectfully say that's not going to happen. You're not chief no more. Different form of council could make it go dark after certain hours. I worked in a facility in Florida that I handled multiple dispatching for police, fire, ambulance, medical, EMS. And I was the call taker, and I dispatched for the local police department. And, uh, it worked, but yet it did it. If we got, if, if I was overwhelmed with calls, the fire department took over communications. They assisted me. Sheriff's office, I didn't answer the phone and three rings. Sheriff's office took it over. I don't know if all this is going to have that. But I, but I'm concerned of the issue as a local department, when the phone rings, is that phone gonna ring and go to the dispatch center? And the dispatch center's gonna have to send it back to the police station? So, but if you, if that call that somebody's calling the police station for information develops into an emergency, you're gonna send that off to them?
No.
So how are we gonna handle that part of it?
Through, through you, Mr. Chair. We will have an in-house officer working the desk, fielding every single call that comes in other than nine one one. So whether you walk in to report a crime, whether you call the business line to report a robbery, if that's the case, we will dispatch it, we'll radio it out immediately from our comms, from our, from one mechanic street. It's not gonna be a transfer and another call, another call. You would actually get, in theory, with police officers inside, like I alluded to earlier, you'd have more of a, a local person that may or may not know you than you do now. None of the people that work for us live here. Right now, the ones that answer the phone down at the station, as far as landmarks and reference points, they're not from here. They don't know any of those. So there's no real difference when it comes to dial in nine one one now, or at a regional center. What you sound like you're concerned about is the business line and the day-to-day operations, the day-to-day contact. That will still be by a local person. A police officer that we hire, this council recommended to be hired. So you'd still know these people.
Some of the issue that I have with regionalization is the fact that we had a fire one time on Cliff Street. I dialed nine one one. It went to New Branch Tree.
Doesn't happen anymore.
From New Branch Tree, it went to Sturbridge because it wasn't answered fast enough. And then I was calling, and if you call on a cell phone, I don't know how it is today, you call up and they'll say, hang on, let me send you to the Southbridge Police Department, those kinda things. And I, I, I find that difficult. And I, I'm, I'm concerned about that happening in the regionalization. I, I, I'm kinda for regionalization for everything. I, I wish we would do the ambulances and things like that and, and utilize regionalization a little bit more. But we're so used to being serviced by our police department, our fire department for calls that, uh, I'm concerned that we're gonna lose that, and that the public out there is gonna lose faith in its emergency services with delays, potential delays, or any event we have a hurricane or tornado come through like we did June of, uh, ten years ago, whatever it was, and get overwhelmed. You had Sturbridge, Charlton, Southbridge, all the way up to Amherst. That, are we gonna be indulged or not be able to handle it? You know, is this, maybe this gentleman can answer it. We'll have a system in place where it automatically kicks over and stuff. I don't know. I just find that, this has been going on since two thousand seventeen. I've been on council three years. I know we gave the okay to go look into it, but this is the first time, other than talking by the way, aside with the chief, yourself, or the town manager, that we've gotten this packet of information to understand, and we're expected to make a decision within the next couple of weeks. I find that difficult because of, you know, the questions that I had with these pros and cons of dispatching.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to, to the question that you brought to the police chief in regards to the local people. We, since we lost the dispatchers in, from the fire station, that scenario that you explained happens almost on a daily basis. Someone will call the business line. It turns out like a regular, normal, hello, how can we help you? It turns into an emergency call. We turn, we take the information and we call down to the police station, because there are dispatches in there right now, and we push out the information as an emergency. So we're getting those calls still. I, I, I can tell you from a lady in town that calls and asks us what time it is because she can't read her clock in her house to, I have a CO alarm or an alarm going off in my house. What do you want me to do? That turns into an emergency call. We give her her date and time. So those local things will still remain there. We're already doing it now.
If I may, some of the problem that I find, like calling the fire department, is the fact that you could dial the phone number and you get a prompt, but all different time, and if you got an emergency, dial nine one one. I find that difficult, and I'm not blaming the fire department for doing this. I blame us as a community of not supplying the personnel to answer those calls and, and talk to a live person. You don't get to talk to a live person till you hit the right button, and if you hit the right button, you're lucky. If you don't hit the right button, you're unlucky, you know? So those are things that I think that we as a community need to work on prior to actually voting on this, to, to research a little bit more. I mean, I've spent days looking for, at this stuff and looking at different things. I think it's Hubbardston. I'm not sure. They bought a building from AT&T for ten dollars, I think it was. Am I correct?
I'm unfamiliar, sir.
Hubbard, Hubbardston? They made a nine one one. They bought an AT&T hardened building.
From Citizens Action, right, in Southside Falls.
Okay, so, then I looked at this building in Auburn. It's good. I, I believe in a assessed value of almost five million dollars. So we're gonna pay that kinda money probably, if not more, and it's really not a hardened facility. It's probably better than what we offered, they have offered. But it was a manufacturing piecework-type building in there, and I don't know, understand how, and I didn't go take a look at it because prior to that, I was in favor of it. But how do you go into a building that's manufacturing, that do piecework, into a communication center? The advantages of it, from what I see, it's got an eight hundred amp service and those kinda things.
Tom Mender? You know, Council Adams was there. This is, that was a mixed-use building. So it has offices in there already. I mean, haven't been part of dispatch centers, the Branch Tree Dispatch Center, Electric City Regional Dispatch Center. This facility is incredible. There's office spaces. There's already men's rooms with lockers. There's a, yes, the manufacturing area. There are cubicles for cubicle space, but the manufacturing offices could simply turn into ops centers for dispatch. And so, there's pictures online. Glad to send you some pictures. There, there really is ability to be transitioned, pretty, I, I think some of the conversations were what they did with Westcom. How much was Westcom? Fifteen million. I think with this building, just the purchase price of the building and the improvements that they're, I'm not gonna quote you, but I think they were talking under the double digits mark, probably to do everything compared to the other rec centers. Your questions, and if you could give me a copy of those, then we'll gladly get that information. The goal is to answer those questions. Um your questions, and if you could give me a copy of those, then we'll gladly get that information, the goal is to answer those questions. Um governance is always a topic when it comes to regional dispatch. Uh having been a police chief, going through a small town to regional dispatch with New Braintree and the state police dispatch. We we uh we had a lot of conversations about governance. How how do towns have the conversation at the table? Um and you're right, that article is correct, as long as you structure it in a way that people have voices. That you have, uh you know, certain levels, the whole manual I think does outline, and the community, uh interested community packet. Outlines what that governance is, that you know, executive board, and then an operations board, where you would have administrators from every town that would be brought. To the table to talk about decisions and and budgetary questions and things like that. And then the operations, which would be chiefs. Uh Westcom was the same way, set up with diff- three different levels, I believe, they had the executive board of all administrators, the operation board of chiefs. And a floor level of police officers, firefighters that could have talks about, conversations about what goes on the floor. So yes, it is an important topic that we will, it is in the manual about how their governance is set up. But that is important that we all have a seat at the table to determine uh and fight for all the needs of our communities. That is absolutely uh critical. So, um those other questions that you have, they're all great questions because those are all the questions that you do ask. It should be asked when you move into this kind of model, right? Local control, same thing, when we went to New Braintree Dispatch, same thing, uh chief was over in, what, where are you, Eastbrook? Eastbrook field, we had ten communities that all came to the table that had the same concerns. You're not gonna know our communities. You're sitting in a dispatch center in the state police barracks, or it was New Braintree State Police, the academy, you know? How are you gonna know what's going on? Um so I look at it at multi-level, right? Resident, former council, town manager, I also look at my level of experience as a public safety officer. As a police officer for thirty plus years in fire EMS, having gone through what regional dispatches are. And I'm talking regional dispatch thirty years ago when I started, and more recently, two years ago, where I worked for the town of Paxton as a police officer. With an individual dispatch center for Paxton, Paxton P D had their own dispatch for fire police. Morphed over to the Wachusett, um uh is it Wachusett, right, Wachusett. Regional, same questions, chiefs have the same questions, the governance, the fair, equitable, you know your towns. All great questions, and we'll gladly pursue more answers.
Yeah, I wish I would've made a copy of the article that I wrote there just before coming here. And in this article that happened out to the southern part of the country, was they were in Pennsylvania, I believe, it was uh. Regionalized dispatching, the call taker. The different protocols that each town has, standing operating procedures. In a particular place, this dispatcher dispatched the amount of what the run card said. And the police officer actually was shot and killed because. They didn't follow the protocol that the town had in place, the standard operating procedures. So what the article went on to say is, when you have seven or eight to ten, and in some instances. There's fifty towns being answered, it's a huge facility, that each town is individual, and how do you deal with that?
What I think, uh for you, Mr. Chair, those conversations were part of our conversations when we looked at these regional dispatches. Uh operationally, um I think in Westcom, we're talking about those same issues. I believe Aaron Hastings, who I had the opportunity to work with many years, and had moved to different, set up these dispatches. Talk about, you have to bring people to the table to make sure that you have some commonality. Don't lose your individuality, but also make sure that the major incidents you handle on a common thread, and it has to be. You know, you have to, and that's why you have those operational boards. The E board, the police chiefs, fire chiefs operationally, to say, okay, um how are we gonna draft this? So you don't make those kinda mistakes, right? You wanna do that, but you wanna have some individuality.
But like with our own dispatch, and Chief can answer me on this one, is the fact that uh. Our dispatches will have an incident on Cross Street, for instance. So you know Cross Street could be a hot area, and you would probably send more than just one police officer there. To handle that particular car, whatever it might be. Where a regional dispatcher will just say, okay, it's just a, you know, noise complaint. How do you deal with that? When you, when your officer gets there, he's been sent by dispatch to, with one car. And you get there, you, I mean, you could have the same situation, you've got twenty people in a fight. But how how do you deal with that with a regionalized dispatch?
Simple, it's it's in your, through you, Mr. Chair. They, it would be logged, it's it's in a call, right? So if you get a call of a disturbance, regardless of where the nine one call comes in from, it'll say, you know, fifty seven Cross Street, you'll see the history. So if you're sitting somewhere, you could be in Los Angeles, you're gonna see the history, Cross Street, shooting, gun case, search warrant, overdose. You'll notice, you'll send multiple units.
Alright.
That's not an issue. Technology makes that not an issue. It's all, it's a permanent database, we have thirty years of history with our police, while we went live in nineteen ninety four, so a little bit more, thirty one years, right? All that's all gonna go over to the comm center for a call.
Mr. Chair, for you and council to add to that as well, too, we we train our officers specifically. That they have to take care of themselves on the roadway, our sergeants are trained, they listen to the radio. So in a scenario like that, the officers would recognize the radio as well, too, Cross Street disturbance, we know we need to send two, three. Unfortunately, because of a lot of the problems we've had with the car communication specialists. And kind of going to another one of your concerns with locations and addresses and different things. We've been forced to train our officers, and I'm sure the fire department with their personnel as well, is to listen to the radio. Adapt, make that decision on the road as to what you may need for personnel, where you may go. I will say, probably approximately seven out of ten phone calls that are placed either nine one or the police department or fire department. You're getting maybe fifty percent of what is actually going on at the incident. That fifty percent of that, twenty five percent was probably accurate. So it's so important when we train our officers, and I'm sure the fire department as well, is, you're going to this call, preparing yourself mentally. For something that could not even be close to what you're potentially being dispatched for. And what I mean by that is, a lot of times it'll come in, say, as a neighbor, neighbor complaint. But you get there and it's a full blown domestic. And a lot of these, these things you're mentioning with these articles we're seeing in the world today, where officers are showing up, unfortunately being assaulted, firefighters. That is partly due to, and and not the communications fault. They're only communicating to us what they're being told by the reporting party. So the reporting party may say, you know, there's, there's a person walking around that's suspicious. And when the the police officers get there, they very well could have an ambush situation on their hand. Or could require a much different circumstance. So communications, while it's vital, we train the officers, do not, you cannot rely on that a hundred percent. Because it's not their fault, they're only relaying the information that's coming in to them through the, through the phone line. And, you know, the the chief talked about, uh, you know, our dispatches not necessarily being straight from Southbridge, not knowing the area. That's why it it's so important that if the officers, when we train them through F T O and everything else. They really need to learn the town in and out, that's why the chief is so big on full patrols. Make the officers walk the alleyways, the businesses, get to know all these intricate spaces and everything. Um I don't mean to keep going, but the second thing I was just gonna touch upon really quick, that we talked about was the call volume that comes into the call centers. I don't think that there's any comm center that's set up to handle, handle call volume in a mass incident that you've described, such as a fire. A shooting, anything like that, there's always gonna be overflow. For example, for us right now, our overflow would be Sturbridge. Now, with this regional center going, Sturbridge is already committed. So essentially, what's gonna happen with all these communities already committing to this regional, we're not gonna have anywhere to overflow. Uh myself, Detective Bailey, we're in nine one one during the tornado you spoke about. It was absolutely impossible to handle every phone call that came into there. We stood in that center for probably fifteen minutes trying to answer phones along with the dispatchers. Sturbridge was getting calls, every other community. So there's gonna be certain circumstances that I just don't think any comm center would, would be capable of handling. In an absolute, full blown emergency of that capacity. Smaller capacity, I think, like the fire chief touched upon, and the police chief. We're talking about essentially eleven personnel at a time per shift in this comm center. So you'll have some towns that won't have calls all the time, that'll be able to transition personnel over to Southbridge if we're having. Say a five alarm fire, or um, you know, one of our, you know, big fights on Cross Street that you attested to. Uh they'll be able to slide a dispatcher to over inside that comm center to give us three or four people on a radio or on a phone line to handle us. You know, Spencer, Oxford, some of these other towns, they're not gonna, those dispatchers are not gonna be twenty four seven answering, answering calls. Maybe like ours will be, so I don't know if that helps to answer some of your concerns.
Let somebody else talk.
Uh anyone out there in the crowd? Uh Counselor Daniels?
Thank you very much, I'm just curious, I think Lieutenant Alouz will allow that, but I'm thinking about that seven on fire down on Union Street. Do you have some sense as to what the process and procedure would be for a dispatch center to handle something that big for a town?
So, obviously, that was an event that we we're all very aware of. Um by us joining this regional center in that particular case, and I'll go back to what George had said. The the protocols and the policies and the procedures are gonna be all loaded into the software. So as Union Street, my fire, my building's on fire, we'll use that as a scenario. As soon as our regional dispatcher center hears that and gets the calls, it's gonna populate on the screen. And then it's gonna send Southbridge as a response, and they'll dispatch that out. And as it keeps morphing into something bigger, second alarm, third alarm, fourth alarm, that dispatcher for Charlton, Sturbridge, Auburn. DFS, they're all in the same room, and I can tell you honestly is that as those triggers keep getting hit, second alarm. Those, those towns are gonna be automatically dispatched. Now there is a process, and this may throw you where it comes into. Although the dispatcher did a very good job on that fire, she was doing this and this, and it was cops calling all over the place. So when we, when the second and third alarms were struck, she had to call over the radio and hope someone in Charlton was listening. And hope someone in Sturbridge was listening. Here, with the regional approach, all of these things, the triggers will be happening within the regional center. It's gonna speed up mutually response, we all have mutually, the police department does, the fire department does, sometimes the D P W does. So within the organization as it sits right now, it will be automatic triggers, everybody will be in the same room. And it will automatically be fed into the software to make that all happen. So that was what, I was gonna mention that earlier about, because you're, the police situation, the same thing can happen on the fire situation. Everybody's on the same frequencies.
Counselor Daniels?
Now, to continue in that vein, during that alarm, how long were you with the scene during that alarm?
For the entire event?
Right.
Uh I think my inspector and the fire marshal's office and a couple of police officers, we were there till ten or eleven o'clock that day.
Alright, so you're there for an extended period of time, you've got dispatch in town committed to handling that incident. During the incident, were there other incidents in town?
There certainly were.
And who handled those?
Uh I don't, I'd have to refer to Lieutenant Salisbury now.
Unfortunately, it was those same two dispatches that were still providing resource and aid to that ongoing scene at that time. There's no, in the situation we're currently in now, those two dispatches are two dispatches. There's no calling someone in, there's no getting help, there's no pulling someone into our incentive where, as we alluded to in the comm center. You have somebody that's maybe, for myself to the town manager, that comes over, literally just comes over to the desk, helps out, jumps in. Uh you know, occasionally, myself, Lieutenant Dingley, the deputy, some of us would be walking through dispatch during one of these chaotic events. And I mean, I definitely am still capable of picking up the phone and trying to help out, but uh the technology dispatch is drastically changed. As I said on the desk, well over ten years ago, the, I wouldn't even know I run someone through the different technology that they have here now.
So, as it is right now during a major incident, there's a lot of juggling going on. Where it's less likely, if I'm quoting you correctly, then it's less likely that there'll be this kind of juggling going on.
I I would say, I would say there'd still be juggling, but going to the regional approach, you'll have more people available to help. Make those calls to the Department of Fire Services, call the Fire Marshal's Office, you'll have more of a pool of people. So you have those two dispatches working at, we'll use that as a story, helping with the initial response and setup of the fire itself. Or the police incident, or whatever it is, it could be a shooting, but you'll have more of a pool, like Lieutenant said, there was nobody else to pull from. By having the regional approach, you have more people and more resources to pull this in.
So most flights people over.
Yes.
As like Spencer and those towns are are quieter, as we'll say, they're quieter in essence, those dispatches become, can become free to move over. And and I think the part of the proposal that's that's missed here, and I know the police chief said it, is that each shift will have a line supervisor. Working in that, in that bunker or con room, whatever you wanna call it, that's the extra person. And then there's another extra person from the battery system who could come over and slide over and help, so there's always resources into it. And I agree with you, the the major hurricane, tornado, large, large events like that, it's gonna be, the whole state's gonna be overwhelmed. We will manage and pack away and get the most priority stuff pulled out of it and extracted back to the responses that need to be going there. So, um that that that's a, it's that's, nobody wants to have another tornado come through, but it could happen tomorrow. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and Chief Woodson, you're saying the station will never be docked, at least as long as you're the chief.
No, and I would say you've got the entire command staffs in the room tonight, I would say, I'm not speaking for them, but none of us, and some of them are gonna be here for many more years. None of us would ever want that building closed, ever, you could not operate effectively, it'd be a disservice to our community. And whoever the next chief or next deputy, next whatever is, I would say as a council, you could say, hey, you're the new guy, we're interviewing you, or whatever's happening. What's your intention with dispatch? And you, you guys would have, men and women would have a say in it. You can't close those doors, you cannot, we have, some days we have over a hundred people come in those doors, looking, seeking for some help from us. They're not coming to see us, I told one of the councils, they're not here on their best day, it's their worst day, right? They're not coming to say hello, so I don't want them to have to stand outside, hit a button, be standing at a camera. And then they talk to someone in Auburn, and then they say, yeah, we're gonna send the police guy there to help you. No, you need to be talking to a human being, and they always will. So when you walk in that lobby, you are gonna be greeted by someone you know, probably someone that you know better than now. Because I don't know if every, if the council here knows any of our dispatches right now, cause they're all from out of town. So you may have a better, a more of a familiarization with some of the people that you're, you've hired through the council as police officers. If they're working in-house, doing booking, checking prisoners, greeting people at the door, that type of thing. It's gonna be a personal touch to it, that we will not lose in this community, ever. And you have a say in it, going forward, even when I'm gone, the council will absolutely have a say in what happens in the operations of that. With whoever the next person is.
Got it.
Uh thank you, sir. So to to the councilman's question regarding the staffing levels, this model also, it's important to know, as the chief said, has a supervisor per shift. But the way the shifts themselves are made is different as well, where you have call takers and dispatchers. Right now, you have both working, maybe in this department, they're doing, juggling both of those, both of those functions. But in this model that is presented by central mass, you have independent call takers, independent dispatchers, which is key for these large scale events. Structure fires, domestic shootings, large scale uh events where I as a call taker, my sole responsibility is to answer the phone. Take the information, enter it to the CAD. My partner as the dispatcher, his sole, his or her sole responsibility is to be on the radio. So when a structure fire, if a firefighter calls, a firefighter calls, may they, if I'm busy answering different multiple calls, I may not hear that. But as a, as a dispatcher solely assigned to that radio, solely assigned to the fire radio, I, I'm more likely to be the firefighter or command, say. Evacuate the building, same thing on the police side, if it's a domestic, um answering multiple other calls, I may miss some of the details. As opposed to if I'm assigned solely to the police radio, I will hear the officer call for backup or whatever codes they may come across with. So I think that's a key, key factor, thank you to to the gentleman's point.
Thank you, Counselor Dan.
Uh thank you, Chief, for you. First, I wanna say uh, uh thanks for Chief Woodson calling me to discuss that. Uh the town council, six years, I've never heard of it, and just came last week from nowhere. And finally, we discussed it, you know, and we started knowing about it. I wish I knew it before to, you know, learn or study uh more, uh hopefully like the chief said. Uh we'll have extension to uh, uh search more. Uh second of all, you say, and we saving money to the town, so we're gonna get rid of dispatches, our staff, uh we're paying them. Whatever it is, twenty, thirty dollars, and we're gonna put a officer fifty, sixty dollars an hour. So I don't know where we saving money here. Second of all, regarding, we receive all the call nine one one, we'll take the pressures of the, this, this patient phone call. The nine one one call, only gonna pick up the phone, and gonna transfer the phone to Salisbury back. And Salisbury is still liable for picking up that phone and doing his homework regardless of the committee. So I still have to have the same value of the call. So I still have to have the same value of the call, other and just, you know, to dispatch and trying to be local and send a call to different officer on the road. It's gonna be one police officer sitting in the, in the room or staff regardless, getting those phone calls, if it's one, two, three, four, and trying to spread them out on the officer on the road, you know.
I don't know, through you, Mr. Chairman, I don't know if I misunderstood you, but as far as the cost savings, if anything, it's gonna be exactly what it is right now because you're going from nine full-time employees down the floor. So the dispatches, because we have two people on the desk at all times, that wouldn't necessarily be the case because we no longer do nine-one-one dispatch. As far as the the uh semrec in Auburn getting a nine-one-one call, there's no transfer. They dispatch immediately from the site.
To the police officer?
Oh yeah, there's no transfer, there's no call to the station. It's immediate, immediate.
So so you, let's go back a little bit, our staff right now, they're not from town, but at least they're working daily. They become know the town by phone call every day. It's the dispatcher in Auburn, they're never gonna know the town. Uh it's always different, they're far away, different call, different town, different street. You know, it is a lot of things I agree with you, a lot of things I don't, I mean, this is my opinion. The chief, I have a fire department chief, I have a complaint, a citizen went to the fire department, ringed the bell, nobody opened the door, was nobody at the fire station, already started going dark, I guess. I'm not sure.
That happened in two thousand twenty when we released all all the dispatches, which were firemen, back to the floor to do calls. So yeah, we go dark. We took out our municipal uh hard-wired fire alarm system around the town. Because at the time when we do, did the transfer from the fire station to the PD, it was about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to make that change. So it would be monitored at the PD twenty-four hours a day. So yes, there are times, uh every day that we, that it goes dark, every night. And that's what the button, the blue light, I don't like the blue light, the comm thing, it should be a red light. And it's on the fire station, but um that's why that blue light was installed. That was an additional cost to the fire department's budget to to get that extra phone line. Because that's a two-way uh informational street to the police station, which, if you've heard all what the chief has said, that's not gonna change. Someone in Southbridge driving down the street and pushes that blue light button, it's gonna go to the police station still. Even though, because that's gonna be customer service, we wanna continue with customer service locally.
Either in Boston, downtown Boston, no fire station, no police department will close their doors for a while. I looked at me up before and uh it's sad, it's also a small town, beautiful town, they're still all uh residents grow up together, know each other, uh you know, I I feel like, you know. We're still closed other than another town and we already saw, started seeing the idea or 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 seeing, you know, closing doors, pick up the phone, only now. Meeting the people, our locals, uh uh speak with them directly. And another thing, if it's disaster like a tornado or whatever, we have that big unit, the state's uh for communication, I believe, if I'm not wrong. Uh will help every town, not only uh Southbridge. So I I I, the only thing I'm just uh worried about, like, just gonna give a small example, you guys not maybe agree with me uh about it, like the building department. Uh state come up or we got a grant, beautiful, to get the building departments, get the permit online, uh help the builders to fill it up, they don't have to come in here. Uh make it easy on our uh, you know, citizen, come find out, they don't take cash anymore. Uh citizen come to the office, they're charged them twenty-five dollars to help them. Even our secretary, he doesn't stay inside anymore, she just go for inspection and she have no, I I I didn't train or anything. So I I don't wanna throw a lot of stuff outside and and that's my concern about fire and police. Now we're getting to, oh, we're saving money. But uh down the road, we're not saving money, we give our uh our authority, our power, the local, out to other people. And uh and I I I don't know, I just, I'd like to get more uh information, uh uh more time to study it. To make me believe it's it's the right move, I'm moving or I'm gonna hope on that in the future. Thank you.
Councillor Montague.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um I have a bunch of different things, questions, comments, and I might forget something, I might ask you to come back to me later. But uh if we can get out in the open, if we had unlimited resources, unlimited money, I think anybody would agree. That obviously having an elite, local hometown dispatch that is perfect, this councillor, Shen is hoping for, that that just comes into getting. That would be better than a regional dispatch, but these are things that very few people on this map still have, those local elite. But obviously in a perfect world, this is why people wanna vote no, is because we're giving up the potential to have something better. That we're never gonna be able to have again, a local culture of knowing the people and the towns and the streets and all the different landmarks and stuff like that. Um because the previous speaker's correct, these people do drive to work to Southbridge every day. And to some of the previous speaker's concerns, I I share the concern uh first, whoever can answer this question. If Southbridge is the biggest fish in this game and we're getting at the ground level means that we have more say in what goes on and we can take more stake in the matter. Southbridge being the biggest fish in the game, why do they not hold more weight to the locations that we've offered them? I understand that this building in Auburn is great, sounds like it still needs a decent amount of money. But I mean, from from what I gather from discussions, we've offered some good sites, we have offered land opportunities. And if Southbridge is the, by far, it had more costs than these other cities, why doesn't this regional CM, REC, whatever? Why don't they put more stake into, it should be important to them, I think, to have it in Southbridge rather than Auburn. Because I think we don't wanna give up local control, but at least if the regionalization was here, there'd be some sort of difference than having it in Auburn, I think, and perception wise anyway.
I'll be, I'll go ahead.
Town manager?
That that that, that question came up from the very first meeting. The town administrator in Sturbridge said, my selectmen won't vote for this unless it's in Sturbridge. And then somebody else says, well, my selectmen won't vote unless it's in my town. When we say percentages, it's call volume and it's population, right? We are the highest. Um the state is paying for the bill for building this out, you know, the state is saying. We offered the potential for next door, okay? We offered them that the old Pleasant Street School building might be viable. If I were to look at those two facilities and then look at what they're getting for the dollar amount, that they don't have to really do a lot of rebuilding. It's the state's call of where you're gonna put this, this center, right? I I think, right, for the most part, they're they're footing the bill for this. Everybody would like it in their town, uh but we don't want it in our police station, we don't want it in our fire station, no town wants it in their police or fire station, it's a district model. So that that I think is is the answer. Everybody wants it in their town, we are footing the bill, we foot the majority of the bill for Bay Path Regional High School too, right? I mean, it's a uh, that's not apples to apples, but that that's that's what what we have, that's the reality of it. We have love to use a property in Southbridge, yes, the property unfortunately in Auburn. I I can understand why the decision was made if the state is gonna put that kind of money into a facility. Westcom went into the old gentleman's club that was in.
Chickopee.
Chickopee, that they spent a lot of money to rehab. I look at security too, if we, you know, we want these uh wrecks to be secure. Um the property there in Auburn does lend itself to have the ability to be fenced in and in an area where there is a lot more security that we could have offered with this piece of property next door. So I'll defer to the the reasons for a location, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't get your name.
Sure, yeah. So Peter Kinnis, I'm the Director of Special Projects with the State Department. Uh and to the question on the location, one thing I think to keep in mind uh is that this is a a current center that's operating. It's out of the town of Rutland, uh it was hosted through the town of Rutland, but then became the district model, which was earlier discussed. Uh and one of the key things to keep in mind too, with any location change, is the current staff that is at the center. Where if you go from Rutland to Southbridge, that's a much larger jump than from Rutland to Auburn or vice versa. Same thing for your staff, if this were to stay in Rutland, if any of the staff were to come over from your PSEF into the CM rec, that's obviously a larger, larger potential. Now, we're not talking hours, long distance, but still, it's something to keep in mind uh when it comes to the location. And as far as the the suggested site in Auburn, if I mean, the chiefs have been there, councillors have been there, it is, it is. To the question of the hardening of the building, it's no longer gonna be mixed use, it's gonna be solely, that eighteen thousand, just shy of eighteen thousand square feet is solely gonna be for the PSEF, it'll be for the communication center. Where you have no other reason to be there, love for the communication center. So for the hardening, the beautiful location, the the fact that it isn't gonna be an old school or a renovation maybe where it's gonna be multiples of those dollars. On the lower, lower end, that's kinda where we're looking at, that's kinda where the district is looking at.
Okay, uh if I can concede, I appreciate it, just trying to do good due diligence, be dumb set advocate here because uh obviously everybody wants it in their town. But I do think the one difference between that comment is that we do have quite the high call volume. So I mean, yeah, everybody wants it in their town, but we do have more calls. And appreciate the answer to that. Um at first glance, I wanna vote no on this. I it it pains me to have to vote yes because I get into a situation where as a councillor, I'm very frustrated. A lot of us have been paying attention to a lot of the things that are going around town for over ten years, twenty, thirty, forty years. And there are so many mistakes that Southbridge has made to get to this point, starting in twenty seventeen. When they just didn't staff the dispatch properly when there was a problem, they decided, let's go the route of regionalization, put all the eggs in the basket. I mean, that just gives the perception of along the way, you can allow dispatch to continue to get, I don't wanna say dismantled, but. Dispatch to continue to have more and more problems because we're gonna end up regionalizing anyway. So if it if we don't fix it, it's actually gonna look better when it comes time to regionalize. And it's just this, this, this period of year after year after year after year, we're almost backed into a wall, we have to regionalize. Because it's impossible to fix it. Somebody um used the analogy, the the too much toothpaste has come out of tube, you can't get it back in. Which you've no, you spent millions and millions, you're never gonna fix and make it comparable. Now, better pay, ten dollars an hour, better health insurance, I I don't know how we can compete with those things especially. Let's pretend we did match health insurance and pay exactly, and there, I believe the study you gave us showed that there were nine ancillary um. Tasks that the current dispatchers have to do, like go downstairs to the jail and give other checks and things like this. So you're still gonna match it, but if you're a dispatcher looking for this pay scale, you can just go to one of these other places and not do those tasks. So if we're to eliminate those tasks from the dispatch, it seems like we're gonna have to bump their pay. And then we're gonna have to get more police in uniform anyway to take those nine ancillary tasks over so that dispatch can focus just on dispatch. I I don't see how we can compete, but I don't think that like it's because this is the best and most wonderful solution for the town. It's sad, as a councillor, it's sad that so many councils of the past and managers of the past have just pushed us into the situation. It's beyond repair. Some councillors will tell you, it's not beyond repair, don't let people tell you, you can't do it, we can do it. I I I want, I really want the town manager or somebody to show me how much it would cost to vote no and fix it. Like the chairman Ortiz said earlier, you don't, he just wants to know what happens if we vote no, nothing. Dispatch will continue operating, but you wanna know what if you vote no, and then you fix this. This big discrepancy of what we're offering people who work in dispatch to what they're offering. Um and that just seems like, it seems like I'm getting the numbers roughly from from different people and department heads of like. You might have to spend under a half a million or so in capital and then you might have to spend a half a million a year. And these numbers are not like set in stone, but they're not, we're not talking about fifty thousand here and fifty thousand there. We're talking like big six-figure, turning into seven-figure line items. Um because trust me, I wanna vote no on this so bad, I haven't found one good reason not to vote yes. And it's only because we're in the situation, because we do this to ourselves, there's so many things, we've done it for trash. You should, and I'm gonna get off on a quick tangent, regionalizing the school district by giving it to the state has put us in this mess. We have too much money in the school department and we're not getting any quality out of it, and now we can't afford to bump up dispatch. At least if we got quality out of the school system, property values would be higher, the tax equation would be better, and we'd have more money to discuss this right now. But again, twenty seventeen council, sounds like they could have just put a couple more people in there and stopped this problem altogether. All this really makes me mad at why it makes sense to vote yes here. So if I asked the chief of fire, you would tell me that there are a number of upgrades that need to happen, even the upgrades that just happened, the software is so out of date. That needs to be upgraded now. There's things that have to be upgraded at the police station in four or five years. Uh microwave links, a a brand-new console at any location alone with just the console would cost like three hundred thousand dollars. And not to mention the people that you're putting on to the shift to take over those other duties that you wouldn't wanna offer to dispatch. Um it's sad when I hear, doing my due diligence today with Chief Norman, it's sad to hear that there's no sort of piece of material in the new fire station now committed for dispatch at all. No antennas, nothing. And it's the thirty million dollar fire station now, which is another, just like, I'm just sitting here as an angry councillor. I wanna vote no purely out of anger, not because what any of you are saying are wrong. Um there there's so many things I could touch upon, it work conditions, training, all those things that they're offered it. And if we try to offer it, the number just keeps getting higher and higher and higher. And um I've got more points all over the place, it's obvious that the state is pushing legislature into the grant process of nine-one-one. That is forcing towns like us not regionalized. We are now disqualified from a whole myriad of grants for nine-one-one because we're not regionalized. I think we all would agree that in-town elite dispatch is obviously a wonderful luxury to have if we were able to have it. And I'm sad that this this council, not this council, councils of the past, managers of the past in this town, giving away the schools, the water, trash. And now the dispatch and it, but we're backed into a corner, what can we do? We can't, we can't dedicate five percent of the town budget to dispatch, that's insane. It it's, it it, and you know what, we could have stopped this eight years ago. And and what can you do? How do you fix it? I don't know. Uh that's all for now, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman Lozo.
After that, I can, I have to say something. I came here, I wasn't gonna say a word, I was gonna listen to everybody. But the bottom line comes down to this, lack of visionary people on building committee, lack of visionary people in position. If you think, Councillor Montague, for one minute, that the cost of running business is gonna go down, you're wrong. When you look at what we do with the budget, when we put capital improvement in, look at our capital improvement budget and look at our capital account, we are very healthy. When did we ever say no to our police department, cameras, everything? We have an army, we have one of the top-notch police departments in the state. We're building a thirty million dollar fire station and nobody even thought about dispatch. That's because you had incompetent people on that building committee. They weren't thinking of the future, they're not visionary people. I am the visionary person, I am for Southbridge, I don't care about Auburn, I don't care about Sturbridge. You gave an example on a water, we own the water supply, we own the infrastructure. Now they own the infrastructure, we gave it to them for nothing, and we pay them royalties. That's because you have people making decisions, let's go the easy way, get rid of it. You wanna know my opinion? You tell me what you need in your dispatch to fix it. You tell me if it can't go into fire protection. Someone's gonna have to explain that one to me, I kinda come from the building world. But I was never afraid of the boogeyman when I was a kid, maybe some of you adults are. And if you put enough boogeymen on the table, they'll, oh yes, the salesmanship has been paramount. I'm not even gonna argue about salesmanship. Everybody has done a great job to sell it, I'm not buying it. I'm not buying it, I refuse to buy it, I think we are smart enough and we have knowledgeable people, qualified. Our fire department, the biggest in the area, second to none. And we're not gonna believe in them, we're not gonna believe that we can take care of this problem, we need the state, we need the state to take care of us. Come on, guys, every time we stick our nose and try and team up for the grant money with the state, it's good for two or three years. And then you gotta bite the bullet and it's thrown on to the next council. I do not leave a mess as a councillor or a school committee member. I think, looking forward, do your homework, if you believe in it, vote for it. I don't believe in it, I still think Southbridge is a bigger and better town than anybody around us. And we're heading in the right direction, we gotta continue to own it, and that's what I'm. And we're heading in the right direction, we gotta continue to own it, and that's what I'm about, that's just my personal opinion, thank you.
Town manager?
Through you. Just one comment on the fire station. We did not build a dispatch center in there because the dispatch center is in the police station. That's why we didn't build a dispatch.
Well, wouldn't it be a good idea that if there was a problem, look at it?
No.
I'm sorry.
Right, the problem wasn't the space, the problem is the staffing. If we're gonna come back with, it really is staffing. I think that comm center was built out with multiple stations and included a third station, I think we have off to the side, right?
We, we have a third station, but we only have two piece apps.
So, we have two piece apps, a third station, so, you know, that, that was built out with grants and from the state, from earmarks, from Senator Fatman and all that. So, we didn't look to put a dispatch center in the fire station because this dispatch center is in the police station. We wanna talk about staffing and moving that forward, that's a conversation to have. There are radios at the new fire station, let's make that clear. There's no fire station that's not gonna have radios. So, that comment absolutely is not true, there are radios, there's a microwave that'll go back and forth, that's built into this. There was planning for that, a day room with radios, not a dispatch center because the dispatch center, by prior vote of the council, was in the police station. So, the question is, do we have the staffing, do we wanna continue with this model? Or, and we have this opportunity to go to a regional piece app? Or we stay alone and try to figure out where we go? We, like I say to all counselors, we shoot and sloop, you tell us what you want us to do, we'll try to make that happen. But, the dispatch center is in the police station, it would not move from the police station.
Yeah?
That's it.
Counselor Lozlo.
Thank you, Chair, through you. Uh, Mr. Power Manager, I don't believe the staff issue. I honor a multi-person, the staff issue in the whole United States, not only in Southbridge with the dispatcher. If the dispatcher need ten dollars an hour, come forward, ask for it, we never say no. I don't wanna sign and take Southbridge and give it to the state just because ten dollars extra for dispatch, that's not an excuse, nobody's gonna swallow that. You know, you keep flock, you know, focused on staffing and money, ten dollars, five dollars, Southbridge is not gonna go out of business. Like Chair Lozlo said, we built a thirty million dollar fire station, we're building a dog unit, we're doing all this room, we coming up with the money. You're gonna tell me small dispatch place for Southbridge, it's gonna hurt for another ten dollars for employee? I, I, I don't understand that, I don't, I'm not gonna swallow that. I understand if you, if you make me believe it's better for the safety, better from communication, better from if we need help from different towns jump in because they, the radio, whatever, you know, make me believe that, but you're gonna make me believe five dollars extra and ten dollars extra? If you bring my son five years old, he'll laugh at us, thank you.
Just to follow.
Town manager?
When I, I'm not talking about dollar amount, I think if we're gonna stay local, when I say staffing, we have to look at the number of dispatches we have per shift. That's what I'm thinking we're gonna have to look at. Because, you know, just as, you know, number of, of calls as well, I mean, you have to take a look at the whole model. Dollar amounts, yeah, we, we can find it, we can cut somewhere else, I, I'm just, okay, I, I get that. It was, my perspective on this wasn't just the dollar amount, and when we say staffing, yes, it is critical for staffing. I look at overall safety as well. Counselors, I respect your opinion and hopefully you respect our opinion as to the safety and the enhancement that this will provide, but we'll gladly answer any other questions that you have, thank you.
Chairman Lozlo.
Just a creative idea, we have a dispatch, it's in the police department, we're so far into it, it stays in, I get it. What happened if we needed assistance and we have police officers, they will, they work road details? Why not make it financially feasible for them to help the dispatch? They know this town better than anybody else, they can answer a phone, God knows, they can do that. And they could take the call, they're the professionals that were trained in the first place, before dispatch. And the firefighters were trained to, to do their job, they're the best trained guys. I just can't believe that we have the manpower in place and the structure that we have and we're still not good enough to handle this dispatch. And I, I just don't have any faith in the state guys. I've been in government for probably forty years, well, not thirty, and every time we go in with the, it's an I told you so. And I know that the town manager and I have served in other capacity in town, and it's always, I told you so. I always come up with, why did we do that, I told you so, what did we do that for, I told you so. It's always too late, we're always buried into something, and they, they sound like Council Montegney, God, look where we got us, why, what's the blame, somebody from back then? I just think that we are at a crossroad, and I agree with the manager, it's a decision the council has to make. But I believe that we have our police department and our fire department are the best in the business. And I know we have all those issues and problems going down, drones and stuff like that, but we can get through that. And we can still be the best, best in the business. I don't wanna be Sturbridge, I don't wanna be Chalkin, I want it to be Southbridge. I want to be number one, I wanna be the big dog when it comes to kennels, police, the, the fire department, roads. It, I don't know why our self-esteem is so low that we can't beat our chest and be the big dog in South Central. We were one day, it's okay to be that, it's okay, don't be afraid.
Counselor Shannen.
I got a question and then I got a comment.
Go ahead.
When it comes to recalling of shifts, those kinda things, right now it's done through dispatch, how's that going to be handled? The recalling of the firemen or doing the police, uh, traffic details with the, how's that gonna be handled? Are we gonna plan for that?
Chief?
Through, through the chair, uh, on emergency recall and recalls for station coverage, that's all done through the dispatch center. Any additional overtime for, to fill shifts on, on our end, we handle that in-house. So, if I know there's gonna be a shift available Friday, one of the lieutenant or the captain would, would make, basically make the call and, and go down the list. We handle the overtime, and I think the police department does the same way, but I won't say that. But the recalls, that still will be in play, the dispatchers will push the button to meet it for us, uh, station coverage in Southbridge. That's not gonna go anywhere different.
My next suggestion would be to send this back for further study. Find out, number one, why we can't be a host community? Is it better for us to, uh, have our own dispatch and what the cost of that is going to be? And I would think the police, I gave them the paperwork that I have, that some of those answers could be done. I think, I don't know if you need that in the most, but I would also want council to direct the town manager to do this and to forward this back to the council, I know he's going out on sick leave, but sixty days or something like that.
Yeah, we'd like to at least have a decision one way or another by Thanksgiving.
Right.
That would be.
Then my last comment I'm gonna make, I'm just found it amazing that that Auburn building became available in August. At least that's what it shows on the record.
Town manager?
Yeah, we'll definitely, uh, look, look at that, um, I know that business moved into a bigger, uh, factory from that to a hundred twenty-two square foot factory. As far as, I think, we can gladly get, what, I didn't, through you, the question about being a host, who are we hosting?
We'd be the host community and go get people to come join our, our dispatch.
No, I don't think we'd be able, there's no other towns around outside of Western Dudley who are on their own.
Oh, maybe out in the western part of the state, somebody would go on us to answer.
They're all in a regional dispatch.
I'm just saying, you know, there's a lot of white.
They're all, they're all regional.
There's a lot of white here.
Like honestly, uh,
I'm just saying.
Through you, um, the host agreement, uh, being a host, I don't think we would entertain being a host community right now. We would not wanna be a host community, we would be respons, we don't even have staff enough to handle, handle our own HR. You know, if, if you're the host community, you're responsible for managing all those functions.
Because some of the issue that I see is that this isn't gonna take effect by the time it all happens in two years, at least that's what it says here. So, what are we gonna do to these dispatches for the next two years? We're gonna have turnover, 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 because technically, they're not gonna have a job. You'll be able to apply for a job, but what kinda signal are we sending to them with?
That's not accurate, can I, can I speak to that?
Chief, you go.
All nine dispatchers that will be working at that summer, period, one thousand percent. Every single dispatcher that works for these cities and towns that have already joined are guaranteed to drop.
All right, because I thought I read somewhere in here or in research that I did that.
If they wanna go, they will go, and they're all gonna go. And my question would be, since, since I have the floor, Council Lozlo's right, the, the chairman, this council, since I've been the chief, has been one thousand percent behind public safety. And you know what, it, it's been outstanding at working with this group. But what I, what I will say, whenever you guys come forward with whatever the direction you want us to go in, you can start at around a million bucks, because you're gonna need to upgrade some infrastructure in our building with that technology from twenty-twenty that's already kinda starting on the first, that's five hundred grand. You're gonna need about six more employees and all their benefits, which is about eighty grand a piece. And those employees, if you said right now, Shane, take ten million dollars, we just got a big endowment from somebody from AO, from the Wells family from years ago, make it the best you can make it, work with the fire chief. We couldn't get people to come here, they are going to the summer, I, it is happening. So, even if, I, I get it, I, I'm the biggest fish, we get the most bang for our buck, but we cannot, I said at the beginning and I'll end on that note, we will not be able to staff regardless, if money was not a limit, and I told the council this earlier today, if money was no object, we still couldn't fill the positions. We have a position vacant right now, it's overtime every single day. Because the group of candidates that we have, and I'll say this, my mother is a factory worker still to this day, she's seventy-nine years old, so I'm not besmirching everybody's profession, we have very low-quality people coming out of like, where my mother works, Dexter Russell, who wanna come be a public safety dispatcher, they have no business in this field, no interest in this field, but they don't really wanna do piecework anymore like my mother's done for fifty years, and they wanna come try something new. That's what we're getting, and that's not to disrespect anybody or anything like that, but we're not getting candidates like people I think in this community think we get. We're having a hard time filling nine positions, never mind if the council approved tonight, thirty positions. I don't think we could fill that, and then we'd have to change, someone mentioned healthcare. Our healthcare, you have to change the whole town, you can't just negotiate with a dispatch union, instead of giving you eighty-twenty. So, the whole town would have to go eighty-twenty or ninety-ten, which is what the state's paying. So, it's like, some of these obstacles are insurmountable, is it impossible? Nothing's impossible, whatever we're told to do, we're gonna do it, we're gonna make it work. But, just be expected, don't have sticker shock, because some of those numbers, and it'll be broken down for you, fringe benefits, vacation time, healthcare, retirement contributions, salary, overtime, sick leave, all that's gonna be broken down, how many employees we would need, because you'd need supervisors on every shift, you'd need a director, you'd need non-working supervisors.
I think we need to see that.
Yeah, and you're gonna see it, and that's what the cost would be, so instead of the three hundred and ninety thousand and some change that's due in twenty thirty-three, this number would be due over a million in six months. So, it's, you know, you, you do what you wanna do, you're gonna do it anyway. I'm just here to simply present what I think, what I recommend should happen, and as being in the business for thirty years, this is, this is the best bet for our community, but if it's not supported, that's okay, we'll move on, we'll make it work. Like, the sky's not falling, we, we will make it work, it's just, it's gonna be a little bit more complicated and it's gonna cost a lot more money.
We'll get those numbers.
Well, we'll, we'll give you all the numbers that you need, I don't wanna certainly keep everybody here all night, we'll get you whatever you guys want.
What town is out there?
Just to piggyback off the chief and in sake of transparency to, we're talking about hiring and the chief just mentioned it. The deputy chief and myself have been in charge the past four or five years, hitting the deputy chief long roof, interviewing applicants for dispatch. Chief just said it, we've had basically with NOR, an open employment, we have open positions applied. We get maybe one, sometimes two. Almost every time we interview someone and we tell them that you're going to have to work essentially some form of nights, some form of weekends, some form of holidays, they disqualify themselves, take them right off. We, we're getting, when I tell you we're getting no applications, we're getting no applications. We scraped by to just hire one applicant of an open position, and at the last minute, she called and said, oh, forgot to tell you, I got vacation for a month, I'll be back at the end of October. So, from now till October, we're actually running with eight dispatches. This week alone, I've had ordering three dispatches for shifts. I get it, right, order them in, we continue to move, we continue to march, but that just creates a snowball effect. Because that dispatcher that just got ordered in this week also ordered in last week. Now, they call up for their next shift, now that person gets ordered in, and then they get pissed and they call up. So, I understand, I just wanna put that out there for the sake of transparency. Council Montegney, you touched upon, uh, nine ancillary duties, I'm not sure where that number came from, it's probably about forty-five. They do, outside of their, the, the representative touched upon it, you know, that system being a call taker dispatcher, I, I, there's actually a sheet, I, I can provide it for you, of what they are required to do. It's, it's endless, it's endless what they're required to do on a daily basis. So, uh, we've had a lot of unfortunate safety, we talk about safety. Edward Street was the mayday, Edward Street was a mayday that was missed.
We missed it.
Because they're listening to the radios. The way our, our technology is set up in dispatch is everything that comes over radio, phone, nine-one-one gets recorded. It goes on a call recording, it's, it's a DLR, digital logger recording. The dispatchers have access to play that back. So, for example, if I radio something in right now and they're on the phone, they can play that back. That's great, right, in theory, except when that thing that they missed is a mayday or an officer down or a shot's fired, because now you just delayed fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eight, maybe seven seconds, right? I, I don't know exactly what the time is, because they have to go back in and they have to play that one back. Because again, they're busy with those other duties. It's not a model where you have a call taker who's essentially communicating, their only job is to communicate. And, and I'm not, I wanna make this clear, I, I, I'm not, I'm not putting my stake, stake in here with Auburn towns. I'm talking about, I can vouch for the communication specialists that are in our building, because that's what they are. They're not dispatchers anymore, we're doing them a disservice by calling dispatches. They are trained communication specialists, that's what they are. We're doing them a disservice by not being able to provide them the best that they need. If, if we can formulate that and make that work in Southbridge, that's fantastic, like, that's great. I just, again, we can change a lot of things, but we can't change the applications coming in. And if, say, we increase four or five more spots, we're gonna find four or five people to put in there. And, and you know, deputy can speak to this, we're just not getting one to, to apply, to, to, you know, to put in for the job. So, I, I just wanna make sure that, that hasn't been talked about much, so, wanna make sure that that was out there.
Can I just add a little point to his, the next question should be, well, we have police officers volunteering and all the police, like, all the talent and everything else. So, why not put, help, so, uh, put police officers in the, to help with dispatch, okay? Well, never mind the collective bargaining stuff that may have to come with that, and the union president's here, because I'm sure they're, they're gonna have a say in saying whether they wanna go back to the desk or not. The training, the amount of money that's gonna come to bring every single police officer back to, that we're gonna have to get trained on everything they got trained on to become a telecommunication specialist. And then you're taking guys off the road, where, where the, one of the busiest town in the area next to Western, to man the desk to help with, with dispatch. So, the cost will be to replace them on staff, right? So, are you gonna increase police officers to cover, to help with dispatch? So, there's ways you can go, but again, extremely, extremely costly, and the training never ends. We're gonna have to get trained as dispatches, and again, it may be some collective bargaining issues with them. And I'm sure the fire department too. Same exact scenario.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, I'll keep my quick, little love passion in this room here this evening, and I appreciate the passion. But I, I, I will say is, uh, one question I, first of all, it's about the safety of our residents and the safety of our first responders period, right? We can't even get a lieutenant in the fire department hired on correctly. There's a, there's a lot of things that we're missing here within the town council, within our community that we need to, right? That's our responsibility, that's what the residents did, to vote us in this place, to make sure that we take care of this town, progress it where it needs to be progressed. My question is, first of all, I appreciate the host, uh, the other day over in Auburn. When you have your dispatchers and communication specialists, whatever you have over there, within, if you do this regional, Southbridge have the lion's share of dispatchers. Or they're, they're, when it comes to Southbridge right now, you're talking about nineteen percent, we have nineteen percent of those dispatchers that may have been brought up already. Whereas, somebody like Oakland, it's got two percent, it won't be equivalent one day.
So, through the chair, uh, it, it's a bit of a misnumber, so this center isn't actually run by the state. State nine-one is not running the center, it is an independent district, kind of a school district, where the director, Mike Moriarty, will be the, the, the lead of this center. So, that'd be more of a question for him and his guidance, it's about package, but I think, uh, the, the hiring is visible, I mean, it's a very marketable skill, it's been, it's been pointed out earlier, where, uh, the amount of staff that they're gonna need, to the amount of staff that is currently held by these communities, it's, it's, if all nine wanna come, I'm, I'm sure all nine will, we have more, it's a familiar experience. But again, that's specific question to your question, sir.
Okay, then he said it's in there, so I'll look it back up, I said, I saw the numbers in here, but I didn't see that, so, okay. When it came to the posing. When it came to the pros and cons, I appreciate Councilor Chairman bringing up the pros and cons. He put holes in everything, uh, that we do, or anybody does. When we do ideas or move, move facilities like this. We'll say this, I went and saw that facility, right? We're talking about Elm Street. You can't compare what that facility and the possibility of role compared to something like thirty-nine Elm Street. There's no freaking way. That facility over there, though I'd like to have in Southbridge, that's a great idea and all that kinda stuff. It, it is almost a perfect scenario for it. One thing I did do while I was over there, I started asking questions without the town manager being there, without the chief being there, and I know town manager came over there, asked some questions, and he answered them. I talked about the EOC. There's an EOC in that center right now. We just went through a COVID pandemic. We ended up having to use the community room for a matter of almost twelve months to do that, right? Took away from other, other things that could have happened there. But one question I did ask, I said, if it's Southbridge specific, let's say this local emergency is Southbridge specific, can Southbridge, are they allowed to still have their EOC within our community without having to go all the way to Auburn for the EOC? And then one of the, the answer was, yeah, you can actually send it to EOC anywhere. But the fact that you take a look at the EOC and the dynamic of the drawings here, this architecture over here, you know, you obviously have, I, all the communication and information you possibly need with all those dispatchers and individuals that are in there, including the state, that do come in. But if it's local, we can keep it local. And that's what we did for COVID, and it was very, very successful, with four individuals sitting in there almost every single day for twelve months. So I was very impressed with the fact they had emergency operations centers set up in that facility that had room for room. As towns go in, I look at the numbers, Sutton's not in there as far as, as the numbers yet, so those numbers may go down. Again, not taking away from the safety of all the individuals that are being involved in this. In fact, this, you get more towns involved in that, the cost of sharing does go down for Southbridge at the same time. I have no problem, I love the fact that somebody brought up a cost analysis. What would it cost us if we tried to do stuff like that? Yeah, that's a no-brainer. But I would ask this, and the, and the current town, uh, town council chair brought it up, don't be afraid. I appreciate, first of all, I appreciate the chair of the subcommittee bringing it here. Swear it belonged in the first place. So you're knocking off the tin, as the chair always talks about. So if the tin's been knocked off, I'll also bring up this point, don't be scared to make a decision. That's what the people of this community voted you in for. So I'm looking forward to seeing what your, your decision is tonight. Especially after all the rumors that have been going around. Tonight is the night, I reckon. Thank you.
Chairman Lazo.
Um, four questions. Chief, since this, uh, dispatch center is, it's gonna be needing some help. Is there anything in the capital improvement budget they can put in to upgrade what we're talking about? Or is it?
Well, through you, Mr. Chairman, what I would say is we're about five, five years out, give or take, right, with the radio stuff. So nothing right now, just a five years out.
Okay.
Give what, you know, give or take.
Uh, the gentleman here, you said that the state's not gonna run it?
Correct, sir. So it's gonna be run by a private entity. Uh, it's a government, it, it, the, under best of all, six A, the district is formed. That's the central master district. They're the entity, they're the quasi-government entity that runs this, so it's independent. But it's funded by the state, along with your assessments and other, other, I think, but it's not us, the state's side.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just real quick, and that's the important thing. It is local government control, so it's a, it's no different than the Bay Harbor. You have a regional board, where you have the board, it's, it's like a school committee running your, your operation. It's a, representatives made of all the communities that are on the government board, uh, that have all the decision-making power of how you run that center. It's just funded through state funds. Is that kind of correct?
Yes.
Right, so, so it is local control of all municipalities equally represented. Chief.
So I just wanna make it clear, as obviously Peter, correct me if I'm right or wrong, in regards to this, that everybody sitting in this room that owns a cell phone has a subscriber fee to nine-one-one. What is it, twenty-five cents?
No.
Dollar fifty. So every time a dollar fifty is collected, it goes into the state nine-one-one pool. That money is guaranteed to stay with the nine-one-one systems, regional, all the four or five things that you saw earlier tonight could be approved. That money comes out of that pool. The governor can't touch it, and I don't know what law or regulation it was, but it was set up many, many years ago. And, and it basically, it, the money continues to come out for cell phones. People have two cell phones, it's three dollars. They got three cell phones, it's, it's four fifty. So that money is there and will be continued to be funneled towards the state, uh, towards our, our, our regional.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Counselor.
So, so we pick up a call nine-one-one now at the station, correct?
Yes.
So we're getting paid from that dollar fifty?
No.
It's okay, but we're getting a twenty.
If I can talk for any ten minutes. The doll twenty-five comes in, the three grants that went through tonight come out of that pool, dollar fifty, sorry. It comes out of that pool. So it's called an E nine-one service charge on everybody's cell phone.
Alright.
So Southbridge is getting that money back, or recouping some of that money by our nine-one-one call volume, say five thousand calls a year, you get a percentage of money back from that fee, what you're asking. So this year, it was sixty-nine thousand dollars on a grant, twenty-three thousand, another grant, seventy-eight hundred bucks on another grant. All that money combined comes out of that E nine-one service fee. And that's based on our numbers of, of our call volume for nine-one-one.
So they're gonna get the same grant, the money, because the one, you know, the dollar fifty, plus Southbridge is gonna pay at first three years zero, but after that, four hundred, five hundred, six hundred, plus they're gonna get money from the, the grant because the dollar fifty of the, every cell phone you carry, correct?
If we adopt, through you, Mr. Chairman, if we adopted this more, we would no longer need these grants, because we wouldn't have nine-one-one call takers here.
Correct, but they will get.
That, yes.
They will get what Southbridge was getting, plus Southbridge, they're gonna pay them because they're taking the phone call, because we have to pay them too, no? Why they'll call the dollar fifty, doesn't pay for that, I will not call. Why we have to give them money?
If I could, through you.
Okay.
We're essentially losing nine full-time employees, so no more healthcare, no more retirement, no more salary, no more overtime. So that's what the assessment fee comes on saying.
That, that, I'm not, what I'm asking, you're telling me every cell phone have a dollar fifty?
Yes.
And this is what we're supposed to pay the nine-one-one called staff, correct? So now they're taking the nine-one-one call, why Southbridge have to pay them for it? They get paid anyway. We, I pay, I'm, I'm, I live in Southbridge, I'm paying a dollar fifty for each phone, so why Southbridge still have to give them four hundred thousand?
I just told you.
Deputy Chief.
He can answer this as well. Um, just the pool of all those towns, although dollar fifty goes into that center, and then we pay a difference. Correct, something like that?
Correct, if I may, through the chair, sir. So again, it's a couple of points. So the state nine-one fund is separate from any state appropriation. So as you see across the state, um, twenty-five reduction, time for set reduction, we are separate from that. Cannot be touched by any, uh, other function, by statute. Not only by statute, but by FCC regulation. Uh, that, that fund, those funds come to the state nine-one one department, and we then divvy up as, as appropriate. As we saw from the first four, five, six items on the agenda tonight, roughly, I wanna say a hundred thousand dollars of that is given back to the town of Southbridge through various grants. Training grant, support incentive grant, the E grant. We, i- it's not a mandate, right? On the state side, I'm not here tonight to say you have to do something, you, by July one, you have to do something. That's not what it's about. But it is highly incentivized, highly incentivized through these grants. And it's not that you're disqualified by being a single, by being a single standalone agency, it's just that you're not eligible for these other development grants. Last year, we were at fifty million dollars between thirty-two hundred regional centers. On the support incentive, you're only eligible for the support portion, which again was ninety-some, sixty-some thousand dollars. There's also an incentive portion to that, which is the twos of millions of dollars, if you can remember where the center is. So I agree one hundred percent, it should not be about money alone. Public safety, I've been in public safety for twenty-four years of my life, I'll be personally admit. If it doesn't make sense, public safety wise, don't do it, one hundred percent. I'm not here to tell you to have to. But I think it speaks volumes that you have both department chairs, both chiefs, fire, police department, town manager here. And it's great that this is such a public safety area in the community. But the heads of your public safety are telling you it's not sustainable, that there's a better option, there's a better way of doing it. It's not necessarily, what are we doing to the town of Southbridge? What are we doing to the police department, to the staff? It's what are we doing for that? What are we doing for the nine dispatchers? We're giving them career progression. You can go from a dispatcher to a supervisor to an operations manager, all the way to director, making X amount of dollars more. Uh, you're getting better opportunity for train. And the training grant, they're also eligible for not just the sixteen hours, as we mentioned earlier, but thirty-two hours to, of, of, of grant, funded train, on top of whatever else that the center has.
Sure, uh, Kenny, my, my question, I understand everything you said, but my question is, nine-one-one call gets all over the United States. And they've taken dollar fifty of the cell phone. Why we have to pay for it? Why the town of Southbridge have to pay for it? They get paid already from the dollar fifty.
So the dollar fifty goes to, to maintain the nine-one-one. Uh, it's only Massachusetts, this is, each state has a different one, has a different one. Ours per se, it's a dollar fifty currently. Um, and tho- those funds, like I said, go to state nine-one-one, to be used in various functions, to maintain the system, it's a fair. It's a very expensive system. We have a hundred and ninety-seven of a piece app, so that's why you see the initiative to kind of reduce that number, fewer originalization. And it's not that it's, it's you're losing the money. It was not your money to begin with. It was state nine-one-one. And we're using it in various ways, through the development grant, through the incentive, for five years, the first three years, one hundred percent, fifty and twenty-five. So it's not that you, you have to pay because you have now nine employees, four employees at the center.
We have nine employees because we're receiving a nine-one-one call, but it's just, it's paid, it should be a twenty-four. They get paid for that.
And they are receiving a three-piece support incentive. So they are receiving that money back in multiples.
And a little bit of the money back. It's not enough to hire four staff to answer the nine-one-one call for the town.
Uh, I believe that the numbers are in there, I don't have the packet in front of me here, but I believe the, the proposed incentive for these communities is upwards of millions of dollars, as opposed to sixty-nine thousand. So you're receiving a multitude, you're seeing it, that's why you're allowed, you're, you're able to have a five-year coverage of, of the assessments coverage for five years, do these great centers. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just on Counselor Adams, uh, maybe the chief's gonna answer it. Just because we're, we may or may not go into regionalize dispatching, we're still gonna maintain an EOC here in Southbridge to dictate what's gonna be best for Southbridge, because that nine-one-one center should not take away from our own EOC. And the EOC normally doesn't carry communications, phones. I mean, at least the ones I've worked in.
Correct. Well, our EOC will always be here, it's our community, it will be the new fire station.
Correct.
All the comms are on site, there's no issue. The, the EOC that would be at the proposed facility in Auburn is an option, it's available. But if there's a local emergency, it's here. It just makes sense for all of us, we all live in this area.
Built into the fire station.
Built into the new fire station, actually.
Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, when you call nine-one-one from a landline in the other room, it goes straight to Southbridge Dispatch, right?
Yes.
If I call from my cell phone right now, where does it go?
Southbridge Dispatch.
Southbridge Dispatch.
Where is it gonna go if it's regionalized?
Auburn.
Auburn.
Okay, so the days of the phone call being rerouted to state framing in or something like that?
Done.
Is done no matter what?
No matter what.
Alright, so I really hope that you can come back with a proposal that would actually make this feasible for this town to do locally, because I really want to see what it would take to do this, because I don't want it to go over there. But if you're gonna tell me, if you're gonna come back and the numbers truly are north of a million dollars, I mean, we gave up multi-million dollar revenue, trash and water, and I'm not gonna pick a million dollar fight over a couple of telephones when I know too much about technology and about our existing technology. I, but I really, really hope that you can prove me wrong and show me that it's under a million dollars to do this sort of thing, because it just doesn't justify the value for that much of a price tag. And it's sad that it's at this point. Think this conversation didn't need to be had for another five years or so, if we had just staffed properly in twenty-seventeen. But, uh, thank you for saying that you were gonna do the work to figure out what it would take for us to do it here. And I appreciate everybody saying that we have plenty of time, uh, to figure that out. Thank you.
Okay, so thank you everyone for all the information. Uh, with all that being said, I would entertain a motion to postpone for further review.
I'll second your motion.
So.
Counselor Adams.
So you, is it indefinitely, or are you gonna set the next date?
Uh, does October twenty-eighth work? You got the information that we need?
I'll, I'll coordinate with the chiefs. I will not be here, but I will, I will coordinate with the chiefs to make sure that information is taken.
Uh, Chairman Lazo.
Mr. Chairman, I do agree with Counselor Adams. Don't waste any time. If you know what you're gonna do, do it either way, get it done, so it gets in motion. It's, uh, they don't need any more delay. This council never delays anything. Let's get it done, huh? Don't play a game with it.
Counselor Adams.
I would agree, and like, sometimes agree, sometimes disagree, but like, there, there, I, Paul Dusick, I think, said that he had enough time. I reached out to both the chiefs early, and I, I had talked to the town manager myself. I gave him a call, said anything for anybody, give me a call and to tell me, uh, what was happening. It's like, we, the, the previous town council authorized this, uh, this study. And I appreciate you doing that, too, because that, that gave us a, a new avenue, but plenty of time to have conversations about this. I mean, it, you know, I believe it's kind of the chiefs where you're going, or even, obviously, the subcommittee can make the decision here right now. But if you know the decision already, I mean, that's a recommend, you know? Um, I, I don't wanna sit here for another damn days and think you already have the solution. It's just, it's just being a label crap. So that, what are you guys gonna do?
My goal all along was to make sure that council's had adequate information. Um, I have no problem going back with the chiefs, getting all the additional information. If anybody has any other questions, please, please reach out to us so that we can get you the answers as best we can. Because it is an important decision. We have our recommendation that we believe, and, and I know my good friend Chairman Lazo will say, uh, you know, we listen to all the experts, and they lead us down a path, I've been on the receiving end of that. I do feel strongly on this being on all sides of the issue, uh, but I do welcome getting additional information. So you postponed it to, you said October twenty-eighth, uh, so with the vote for the council by what, the, the first meeting in November?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
I'll have a favor. Motion passing. Motion to adjourn.
Oh, dang it.